The commissioners anyway, they're gonna have to decide that we're gonna fund this, 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 and this, and we're not gonna fund that. As long as we got our top three priorities in line, I think we're okay. And, uh, but I don't have a problem with taking Central off or the roofs. But it all depends on whether we get this extra money or not that might be available. That's the key word, "might be available," to help us with this, which would reduce the amount that we would take from the bond if they did pay cash for some of these things. And so, but I'd like to hear maybe a little bit more, Mr. Kiger.
Well, Carolyn's got a comment, but I wanted to jump in real quick. I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I fully believe that we need to hound the commissioners on item number one, doing it outside of the bond. We really can't wait till 2016 to build that school. It's on our list. And Mr. and Ms. Commissioner, if we get the bond, here's our list, and that's our top priority. But we really, really need this prior to that. And that's just, I mean, that's just gonna kind of be the way we're gonna have to approach it, in my opinion. The need is that great for that elementary school.
Well, I mean, that's fine. And I'm kinda with Rob on this about the roofs and the Central. Now, I'd be more than happy to put those on the, if you wanna leave it on the list. But I'm with him. Underneath that, I would rather put, if you wanna make it even more, I would rather see Coltrane Web and some of these older schools, a little amount put in there before I would like to see roofs and Central. If you want to leave them on the list, fine and dandy to say, well, that is a high priority with us. But to me, a higher priority with me would be an upgrade to those schools before the roof, especially Central. The statement I made, I hold true. Somebody said, "Well gee, Central's 60's years old." Well, I stay true to what I said then. I'm 60 years old, and I've got a good 20 to 30 years left in me. And I feel that building's the same way. I'm with Liz Poole when you said it just needs a little love and tender care. I'm the same way. I just need a little love and tender care, and I'll be just fine. And so, I feel the same way. Central just maybe needs a sprucing up, just like we just did to Concord. Upgrade a cafeteria, upgrade a weight room. Exactly the same thing we're doing to Concord. We don't need the site, great location, great things, what we were brought up with parents. Put new bleachers in, do things, things like that. So, I would say it needs to, I'll take that 13-5, and it can do a lot at Coltrane. It can do a lot at the other things. I'm with you, Rob. I go right along with you. Drop those roofs, or put, drop them down. We know they need to be done. They're necessary. But I would put those other schools before.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker, you have further comments?
Yes, I do. When I opened up, I said that the roofs, it was a shame that we had to put them on this list. But I also said, "We have $180 million not on this list. And you're never gonna get whole unless you ask for the money to get whole." And the roofs are leaking. The roofs are creating mold in our classrooms and unsafe conditions for our children. And our maintenance people are jumping through hoops and getting jerked around. And I mean the word jerked, because they're literally responding to emergencies every time there's a rainstorm. They're not getting maintenance done because they're having to address mold issues and remediation. Ward's going over there doing tests every day, or every time we have a rainstorm, for some type of mold remediation. What is one of the big complaints we get? Mold in the classroom. Unfortunately, we have to put roofs on there. We've gotta get these things accomplished, and the bond is the only way that it seems like we can get the attention that we need to get these structures supported and cared for the way they should be. I had a discussion with the maintenance group in another district, and they told me when they were trying to get themselves remediated and whole, they had to put roofs in a bond in order to get those things repaired. And that was the only way they could get caught up. We have to play, we're playing catch-up, guys. We're so far behind in the race that we can't catch up. So, you have to keep the roofs on there. I think the million and a half for vestibules, if there's such an emergency, the commissioner should allocate the money next year and put those vestibules on the capital list and be done with it. That shouldn't be a bond issue. That's an emergency issue. It's a safety issue, just like you said, Carolyn. That's next year's, that's gonna be on next year's budget. Again, we want that million and a half. As far as the Central Cabarrus, part of that 13 and a half million is to look at, is to do a million-dollar study on how to, how do you fix this campus? Because that campus is 60 years old. It's very inefficient.
Forty-five.
Huh? Oh, she said it was 60.
Somebody said 60.
I'm going, I'm going with Carolyn.
Somebody told me it was 60.
No, it was built in the 60's. It was built in 1967.
Oh, well, good. It's not 60.
So, it's not, it's so much younger than you and I, Carolyn.
(laughing)
But...
You have a fact-check, if you know.
Yeah, well, I'm just, yeah. Thank you for fact-checking me.
Somebody told me it was 60.
All right. But part of it is to look at a master plan for that school. Because, you know, eventually parts of it are going to deteriorate. So, you have to go ahead and develop the master plan. Another thing that's needed, and we need to ask the commissioners, Mr. Phillips said something earlier about a strategic plan. We need to do a facilities plan, looking at all of our facilities and what the needs are, so we can kind of craft together how we're gonna attack the issues. Coltrane Web, Beverly Hills, R. Brown McAllister, let's just keep naming them. You wanna go down the list, and you gotta on and on. We gotta address these things. But we don't have, we don't have a strategic plan, and we need a group to put together, what does it look like, and give us some estimates as to what it's gonna cost. Because anything else you do off this list becomes a wild a guess. And I call that a wag. And so, we don't want wags on this list. We at least want them swags, sophisticated. And that's what this is, a sophisticated guess at what we think the costs are. So, that's, that's my impassioned plea here.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. We're right back to where we started. You know, we've got to have the prioritized list to send to the commissioners. Actually, Ms. Clutz just told us, I think she said she has to have it tomorrow, so, tomorrow morning. And, you know, so, I mean...
They might be here tomorrow morning.
So, you know, we...
(inaudible).
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is it appropriate to make a suggestion that we have something to vote on?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't wanna be the one making all the suggestions around here. I need help from my other six members.
I'm just trying to listen to the board discussion here. Can I make a motion, please, that the...
Well, we can't do a motion, because this is not the business meeting. We'll have to just get directions. We'll have to get directions.
Consensus of the board.
Well, we'll have to get consensus.
Is that appropriate?
Yes.
Is it the consensus of the board that this list can be reordered at this point? Can we change this list at all?
Oh, yeah, we can change it any way we want to. But just, like I say, you just gotta keep in mind of the total amount of the bond. And the big, the big, one of the key components of this, and I mentioned it and tried to emphasize it, is that there might be, or more additional funds. Hypothetically, hypothetically. Say there's an extra $10 million, and we still got the $100 million bond referendum that we're gonna ask the commissioners to do next year. Well, now, we got $110 million to work with versus $100 million to work with. And so, but then again, you got to try to be considerate of the $100 million bond. What could Cabarrus County realistically expect to get from that? And so, and that's what I was saying, the 71 million is already 71%. And so, anything below that would have to come from any extra money that they might have, that they could throw towards school construction or towards some of these items. And the point Mr. Schumaker made is exactly right. You know, it's exactly right. I hate to see us put roofs on there. That's like, you know, financing something, you know, you, I can't think of a good example right now, but putting it on a, you know, a 20-year loan, you pay for it 10, 15 times. And so, we could pay for the roofs and go on with it with the excess money if we have any. But still, that puts us back, though, to the 71 million. So, we just need to come to some kind of a consensus, though, on what we can present to the commission. And then, and after listening to all the comments and thinking about it, it's probably in our best interest to just submit the list as it is, knowing that we got 71 million as our top three priorities, and hope that they will adhere to that and give us an opportunity to try to squeeze that down a little bit. Because I doubt we're gonna get 71 million dollars. I seriously doubt we'll get that much of it. And so, if we do the top three, then the other stuff's gonna be insignificant at this point. We're gonna be right back where we were without those three items. So, and that's just my thoughts on it. But Mr. Harrison, if you have, you know, you know, a suggestion, maybe recommend that we do a consensus of the top three items and just submit it at that point. And, because we're talking about a year. Well, they'll have to let us know something pretty quick, though, whether they even gonna do a bond referendum or not. And see, all of this might be a mute point three months from now. They might decide, "Well, we're not gonna do a bond referendum. We might, we're not gonna do it." Because, you know, we, we have, there might be quite a bit of obstacles that we'll have to try to overcome. And it's not gonna be an easy feat to ask, you know, the county to do a $100 million bond. So, but anyway...
The other thing, keep in mind that at the table with the four groups, the total was $247 million. The charge was, we'll go back to your corners, bring a list that's at least prioritized of, so that everybody's bringing back, if they only get a little piece, you get to at least pick your top, top items. So, that's what we're trying to do, is at least identify those items that would be on our list. And then, maybe that's redundant, and everybody knows that's what we're trying to do. But that, we're trying to pare down a $247 million list.
Well, we gotta get this thing moving, right? I think we all agree on that.
If you got your three, and you got it in a smaller amount, you stood a better chance of getting your top three. If we go in there with a bigger amount, we may not get anything.
Well, but then again, keep in mind, though, the big question is that might, there might be more money available from the county that'll be outside of the bond referendum. And see, we don't know what that is, if any. That is the key question. If we knew that they had 10 million or 15 million set aside that they could use in addition to $100 million bond, then that would make this board's job easier. But we don't know that. We don't know that they have anything. But they might. Sort of word I read, I think I read it in the paper here just recently, where that there might be some. There was some talk about maybe even trying to fund one of the elementary schools and pay cash for it. I do think I read an article somewhere, maybe in the Tribune, about that. And if that's the case, truly the case, then that wipes away one of the middle school requirements. And as Mr. Kiger stated, we truly can't wait until 2016, when we got the schools that's busting at the seams already. And we've already done redistricting. The only thing else that we can do is move kids to Bethel. And I don't know anybody that's gonna wanna do that. And the, and the transportation logistics alone would be a complete nightmare. And we would fill this room and the halls and everywhere else, you know, with all the angry parents saying, "Can't you do a better job than that?" And send my kids to Bethel, where they got 400 to 500 seats. Now, is that right, Dr. Shepherd? That's accurate. And so, I mean, I had one of the commissioners make a comment to me. And I'll just tell you, for this for the record. They said, you know, "Well, Helen, how do we, you expect us to build you a school when you got 500 seats down there at Bethel? I can't vote for no school until we get them 500 seats filled." Well, how are we gonna fill them seats, folks? It's redistricting. And who wants to move their kids to that part of the county and create the transportation problem? I mean, I don't wanna be a seating school board member when that takes place. I'll get thrown off the board and rocks, and might even get shots. I don't know. But that's where we're at, though. And so, you have to put the schools where the growth is. And we already know that. The, the, the study that we had just done just recently, it told us what we already knew. We already knew that. All it done was give credibility and integrity to what our staff has already been telling us, from a third-party, non-biased entity. But I would suggest, and, you know, we need to bring it on, because, you know, it's already getting late. We've still got more items to discuss. And my recommendation at this point, after hearing everybody's concerns and thoughts, process and all that, is let's just go ahead and, they asked us to, as Mr. Kiger said, asked us for a prioritized list. Facilities and Maintenance Department brought all these things up. We prioritized it the way it is on here, as a group. And I would suggest that we, that I'm asking for consensus to just submit this as it is to the commission, and hopefully, they'll give us the 71 million that we need. And then the other items, we'll have to work on it some other way.
I agree.
Could we vote on Central, though? That's the only one I would want to take on.
Well, it's probably gonna be a mute point, Carolyn, simply because the funding's just not gonna be there. And by the time...
But I'd just like to not have it on the...
Well, what, you know, what I was thinking about was that, you know, we, they, the commissioners are gonna be in a tough, tough spot, because they're dealing with, they wanna build a new courthouse. They've got, the Kannaplis schools want a new intermediate school. And we've got these requests. Rowan Cabarrus is gonna have some. And they may be in a situation where they can say, "Okay, Cabarrus County Schools, you can get your number one and your number two, but then we only have $3 million left. And so, let's see, we'll go all the way down to the bottom, and we'll give you those pavement repairs." And I would rather ask for $3 million to, for upgrades at Central Cabarrus, maybe to go for the, pay for a master plan, pay for upgrading some of the athletic facilities that we've heard about, that can give them a reason to, to be proud of their school. I mean, there's reasons to be proud of that school right now, because of what goes on inside in the classrooms. But from the outside, you know, there's things in the athletic facilities that could definitely, they don't project the right image that we want for one of our schools. So, I would suggest maybe trimming that one, rather than just eliminating it, Carolyn. I would say, you know, let's trim it down to something in the 2 to 3 million dollar range, including money for the master plan, so that we at least have a vision of where we're gonna go. And also have money in there for upgrading some of the badly-needed facilities.
Well, how about, I'll go with you if we put some of the safety issues they had come up with not long ago. Or, as he mentioned about the, the study, as I mentioned earlier about the study about doing these things, what was the cost on that study?
Oh, I don't know. The master plan here was a million dollars or a million-plus for Central. Then there was a facility, then there was a facilities assessment study, which we don't have a cost for. Dave estimated what, a half a million or something?
400, I thought.
I would be expecting, in the neighborhood of $300,000, plus or minus the scope.
I could go with some, I mean, but something like that. But to do, and maybe do some, you know, like I say, to replace those bleachers or something like that, put some kind of cost in. I can, I can go with that. I can go with that.
I'm gonna make one small suggestion, because there's a enormous question that has not been answered by the county. And we asked it point-blank at the meeting, "How much of the 100 do we get? How are you gonna divvy that up?" And that answer has not been given. So, in my opinion, what I would suggest we do is take this list and say that we have had discussion as a board, this is a prioritized list, as if we got $101 million, and we got all of it, here's what we would wanna do. But we reserve the right to go back and reprioritize once you answer the question of how much of the 100, or 200, or 100, whatever you decide to do as a bond. I'm sorry, I keep looking that way, but not over there. Whatever you decide as a bond that you're gonna give us, we reserve the right to then go back and fiddle with our list at the bottom, knowing that the top three are gonna be our top three. It's what I've heard from this board, the top three are the ones that are gonna stay. And then we go from there, after we get the answer to that question.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. I have a question for Ms. Clutz, since you're one of the only ones that was around when this last bond referendum, you know, took place. Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, I was around.
Yeah, you was...
She's 60. She was here.
Yeah.
I was here.
The only thing, you was a commissioner at the time, though. You was a commissioner, so you probably would know, too, but...
I've been around for a couple of the bond referendums. Thank you.
But Ms. Clutz, when we did the $98 million bond referendum in 2004, did we ask for specifics, or did the county, it was 98 million, did we have specific items that we presented to the commission that we wanted to be funded? And if we did, did they fund that amount? Or did they say, "Hey, guys, we got you a $98 million bond approved, and this is what you get, this, 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 this"? Do you remember? If you don't remember, that's fine. Ms. Carpenter, she's still young. She'll probably know. Do you remember? Because you was, you was a commissioner at the time.
You gave us exact, you told us exactly what you were going, what project you were gonna fund, and exactly what you were going to do. You gave us exactly, you were gonna do such and such a school, such and such a school. You gave us the exact project you were gonna do. Because, see, one failed. One, one failed...
The previous bond did. Yes, it did. The previous bond failed.
Yeah, 'cause originally, it was 120. That failed. Came back in 98. Yeah. See, I can, I can give you history. I know the history of these things. See, I am old, but I do remember. But no, no, it was, it was exactly what, what it was, the particular thing. It was like, it was going to be Odell, or it was going to be what, I mean, that was, it was what kind of project it was, where it was, what school it was. So, you gave exactly what it was. At least, that's the way, the way it was, because you, it would, you would tell exactly what it was going to be.
But see, like I say, I think Dr. Shepherd made a statement one time. And Dr. Shepherd, you can maybe refresh in my memory, that of that 98 million, we might've got about 80 million, somewhere thereabouts. We got somewhere about 80 million, which was about 80%, which is what the split is with Cabarrus County Schools and Kannaplis City Schools, about 85, 15. It's based on capacity. We, we're 30,000 kids. They're 5,000 or 6,000 kids, maybe. And so, that's how that one was pretty added up. And this, like Mr. Kiger said, whether we, we don't know how they're gonna divvy it up. But I do distinctly remember the chair of the commission stating, "Well, you know, if you expecting us to give you that 85, 15, then what about us? And what about Rowan Community College? And what about the intermediate school for Kannaplis? Because there won't be enough to do any of that." And so, there's where we are. And, but I like Mr. Kiger's idea. You know, we've got it. We've worked on it. We need to just submit it, and then ask them, you know, sometime down the road, say, "This is what our list is, and we would like to have the, the right to switch it around, except for the top three priorities." Now, with that being said, can we have a consensus from the board that we do that, and let's get this on and move on to the next issues?
What do you mean by "switch around"? Does it mean you can add projects or...
Items, items, four down through the bottom there. And then, and even maybe possibly switch the amounts around, as Ms. Carpenter suggested, or Mr. Phillips suggested, instead of doing 13-5 on Central Cabarrus, maybe just do 35, 3,500,000 for Central Cabarrus, and then do a million and a half on the security vestibules, if we wanna put it on there. So, that would be 5 million, instead of 13, instead of 15 million, it would be 5 million.
And maybe add in some of the renovations to some of these other schools?
Well, if they will give us that flexibility. And see, that's an unknown.
Okay, well, yeah, I think their renovations ought to be on this list.
But I believe, though, we ought to be able to have the flexibility from them. And we'll discuss all of that on Thursday, whenever we meet with them. We'll discuss that they'll give us some flexibility, you know, with the items beyond the school part, the school construction part. And if they'll give us the flexibility, then hopefully, we, we can move this around a little bit. We might, it might be that we don't have to do all of these roofs. Because it's not like all of these roofs are leaking immediately. I mean, Jay Robinson's not even, that school's only, what, 10, 11 years old? And you're talking about 2, 3 million dollars in a roof replacement. And, you know, the other schools there, some of them are relatively new schools. And so, Whittington Hills was one of the first ones that we built, and that's been about 20 years ago. So, I can see it's probably getting ready. But Wyancoff's a relatively new school also, when you compare it to some of the other ones. So, anyway, that's, is what it is. But Dr. Shepherd, you have some comments?
I was just gonna add to that, that I believe after the meeting Thursday night, part of the process will include a putting together a group from the entities that are represented, yourself, Community College, Kannaplis, and the county. And I think that group will work out what the final bond distribution will look like. And I think that's, that's your point, to come back and say, "Well, you know, if we don't get this, then we want this," and do some bargaining. And I think the county manager's made it clear that he wants to move forward in a, in a manner that would bring equal representation to the table. And then we get to hammer out the hard part, who gets what, and how much is distributed to each, to each group.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Okay, back to my last question. Can we get consensus on this, this prioritized list and send it on with Ms. Clutz in the morning? Thumbs up? Thumbs up?
I'm a thumbs up.
Thumbs up, two, three, four.
For the first three.
We're, we're, we're kind of, I'm kind of this way.
That's what, I think that's what my suggestion was, is when we send this list, we're gonna say, this is, has been discussed by our board as our prioritized list, but we reserve the right to, to...
Reprioritize.
Reprioritize items four through, how many ever, after we understand what the distribution of the funds are gonna be.
Insert another column indicating the first three items are items one, two, and three. And then the remaining items are not prioritized, but are still on the list. So, the county commission can see plainly that those are our three. But...
We're gonna reserve the right to reprioritize these other three.
Can we remove the word "replacement school" from Central?
And, and one of the things, and I think, oh, wait a minute.
The fact is, 13 million's not getting you a replacement school. So, you, I mean, the wording is there, but it's, it's, it's phasing and planning, it's utilities. Because, Dave, do you remember when we were at our committee meeting, we talked about the utilities?
You had to do a whole major utilities upgrade, to the electrical and everything in there.
Yeah, there's a massive amount of work to go before we did anything.
You had to do it upfront before you could get to replacement. But it was to create the infrastructure, to make the...
It was to create the infrastructure, to make the building a viable structure, so that as you added on to it in future years, you already had the, the infrastructure in place for the power, and the water, and the sewer, and that type of thing, to handle the new school. Because this, the facilities there are aging.
Maybe just put...
One of the things, though, I think we need to make sure, and, because this has been discussed, and I think we need to be upfront with our commissioners in item two and three, especially since it has been discussed, that that number could fluctuate. Because you have mentioned that that number could be 700, could be 800. And we're talking about that building could be on-site, so that number could be lower. And that item two, or three, that that number could fluctuate. So, it could be up, or it could be down. So, those numbers could vary. And I think we need to say that, because that could make a difference. And that can make a difference to where we could go on down. So, we need to make them aware of that. So, and then that can do that. Because we're upfront, that could make a difference, too. So, I just...
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And I think we're sort of getting a little bit redundant now, anyway. And so, I think that we just need to just go ahead and just decide. And that's what I've been trying to get out of you guys for the last half hour, you know, is to decide. And I think that we've come up to a, pretty much a compromise. I think everybody's agreeing with the top three items, and we don't know, I mean, we may come in, depending on what the bid climate is. And Dave, you can, you know, you can address that at some point. The bid climate might be good for us right now. Then again, it might be bad. This might be 100, and Karen said, it might be over. We don't know yet. The only thing that we do know is, is that if we change the scope of the middle school from 900 to 700, then that's a substantial reduction there. We do know that. But the two elementary schools, though, that's probably gonna be close to being what's in line. So, if we save 4, 5, 6 million dollars by not having to buy land for the middle school and scaling it down, then obviously, that would give us more money to work on the Central project, as we talked about, which would require a reprioritization of these items. But I think we all agree on the three there. And so, with, can I, is everybody okay with us sending this list like it is, with the top three being our priority, and we reserve the right to reprioritize and maybe even reallocate of these other ones here?
Or, I'd say even, or add. I mean, there's not...
Yeah, or add, reallocate or add. Yeah, reallocate or even add and take some of these off. You know, is everybody okay with that?
With that statement, to add, yes.
With that, to add, or I'm with, to add, I'm...
Yeah, and add, you know, add as we see fit for, you know, whatever. And it might be that we could put the, one of the roofs off, that might be a million dollars, or $2 million, put one of them off for two or three years, and then we'll ask for that on a future budget, capital budget. Okay? Is everybody good? All right, so that's what we got. So, Ms. Clutz, you've got your ideas. And we'll put this on the consent agenda for Monday, Monday's meeting. And everybody's good with that, right?
Yeah.
Thank the Lord. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes.
I have to excuse myself. I have an airplane I have to catch.
I have to excuse myself, I have a airplane I have to catch.
I remember you telling me that. Thank you, Dr. Phillips, for reminding me. And, uh, I'm glad that you, have a safe trip. We'll see when you get back. You'll be back for Monday, I believe. Yes, okay, good show. Thank you very much. Okay, Board members, we'll move on now to 5.6. We got six, seven, eight, got, actually, we've got three more items here. 5.6 is the board meeting calendar, and this is an item that I asked, uh, Mr. Kiger and myself, uh, discuss this. And one of the, the item that we're wanting to talk about is, if you remember, Board members, we discussed several months ago that we would have on-the-road work sessions. We've got three or four work sessions scheduled at different schools throughout, uh, the rest of this year, and even into next year. And we found out that after we did that last work session at, uh, at Winkler Middle School, that the cost associated with doing that was probably several thousands of dollars to do that, particularly for technology. And, uh, and so I would like to ask the Board to reconsider having the on-the-road meetings. I know that, uh, Mr. Walter made this recommendation to start with. It's something that's near and dear to his heart, because he feels like that the community needs to be more involved, and this and that and all. And I totally agree with that. But I personally, and I, I think that the rest of the Board, at least the, some of the ones I've talked to feel like, that we don't want to spend several thousand dollars, two or three, four times a year, of much-needed money, uh, to do on-the-road work sessions. And, uh, see, when we, the, the school board, during my two-year absence, voted to do on-the-road travel to different schools. Obviously, I wasn't a part of that. But back then, though, everything was on paper. We had paper books, big four, five-inch-thick books, and all of our documents was on paper, everything. And there was not really much need for audio, because there wasn't being videoed. But now, though, that we do everything wireless, we do everything paperless, and, uh, we have need for a lot more technology than we had the need for back then. And so with that being said, uh, the cost, to me, is just too great to move. And so I'd like to open it up with the Board, and we shouldn't have to haggle about this too awful long, but let's spend a few minutes on it, and then we'll put it on the action or on the, uh, consent agenda for next Monday. So we'll start on Mr. Phillips' side, and you can give me your opinions, and, and, well, Mr. Phillips is gone. But, well, actually, it is his side, he's just not here. So we'll start with Mr. Harrison.
Get to talk twice, I'm sure. I, I would like as much of a compromise as we can, um, agree upon. There is an expense, there, there is a burden to staff. It's, it's my hope that we can consider this in more detail in the future. But if it comes to it, then, um, let's make the hard decision. Let's make the hard decision. But we haven't given it enough time to know that it's effective. We have not done enough in terms of communication to parents and neighborhoods. And it shows, uh, a lot to the communities that we're willing to go out to them. Just the same, if it can't be justified for financial and logistical reasons, then let's make the hard decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
Oh, I'm, again, completely opposed to that, so I would like it on the action agenda. I mean, I think we're using anecdotal numbers here. I have not seen any numbers on what it costs us to go into these schools. And there's been, nothing's been sent to me, nothing's been shown to me. My understanding, again, is that I think the benefits completely outweigh the additional cost and expense. Thousands of dollars seems excessive to me for moving to different locations. Again, maybe the first time that we do something, there are additional expenses. You put your brain together, you work on different ways on reducing things. Facilities are different. I mean, the, the way we were, I guess, last time we were in an auditorium, which is, you know, obviously, obviously causes additional, uh, needs. We can have those things in media centers, smaller, uh, locations. But again, I think it's, it's critically important that, uh, we should, we go out to these schools and have the ability to showcase these schools, or show the, show the needs. I mean, next time we've got Mount Pleasant that we're going out to, again, we're trying to convince the voters that this, this, this school needs to be replaced. This is an opportunity to showcase that, have people there, we're going out to this school, we're, we're showing that, uh, again, that the, the staff, the folks that work there, work there, the parents, we're going out to them, they're not having to come to us. I mean, it's just a lot of advantages to me. I've not seen, and I've not seen the costs, uh, to where it would be thousands of dollars. We're talking technology. We all have iPods, we have wireless in every one of these schools. Um, we don't need to have laptops and computers necessarily, if that's what we're doing. Um, I think part of the issue is the length of those meetings. I mean, we lasted, that, that meeting lasted till 11 o'clock. I mean, that, I think was excessive for, for one of these schools. I think that needs to be, we need to have a cutoff time, basically. Um, those things would save time and save expense. But, uh, again, I think it's important that we continue to, to reach out and to continue to get into our community, uh, instead of folks having to come here. And it's only four times, I think it's four times a year. And, you know, at the point we set the calendar next year, you know, if we vote, we don't want to do that anymore, that's fine. But we've put it on our calendar, we've told people that we're coming, or they can expect us to be there. At least, certainly with the Mount Pleasant folks, I've talked to them, they're excited for coming, they want to showcase our school, give us tours prior to, prior to getting there. So, I disagree with the, with changing the calendar at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. And, and we can put this on the action agenda, but just so you'll know, and Ms. Probst will be glad, I'm sure, to substantiate the costs associated with technology. And keep in mind, if Winkler, being our newest school, if we had the difficulties with technology at Winkler, can you only imagine what we're gonna have at Mount Pleasant Middle, a 60, 70-year-old school? And so, I mean, that's just some, just some thought for whatever it's worth. But, um, anyway, Ms. Probst, if you could substantiate, you know, that, maybe you might want to say something about it now to help Mr. Walter understand about the cost, and then you can also, uh, have us a report. It's gonna go to action, anyway.
I'd like to see a report. I mean, that's all.
Yeah, just have it for next week, because we'll go to action. But, uh, I just don't want to see us spend valuable resources when, when we've been cut so many ways, so many times already, and for us to, um, but I understand your passion, though, Rob, I do, and I appreciate that, but I don't want to spend...
And one other, one other suggestion, I mean, we have a board budget for training and, and whatnot. We've got opportunities now that we never had before, to where we don't have to go out to these training sessions, we can do these things online for like $100. So instead of spending a thousand-something on our training that we're required to get our hours, we're cutting back. I'd, you know, suggest that maybe we use some of that dollars to help offset some of these additional costs.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Kiger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and I agree with your sentiment, that, Rob, I appreciate your passion, I just, um, I think it's just too much of a burden. It's a burden on, on Eileen, it's, um, the, the entire cabinet of picking up and taking everything they need for that day, for that one meeting. And for example, the one we had, they drove further to get there than they would have if we were here, because they all came, it just happens that we, we, you know, we don't know what the agenda's gonna be on Monday, May the 5th. Yeah, and, and nobody from the community really came. And then if you talk about, "Well, we need to reach out to the community," well, that's another, that's another job that somebody's gotta do that's not currently doing, and they've got enough to do. I just think, any time that we're asking the staff to take away from what they already are doing, is, is taking away from what our, our charge is to, to educate children in the current capacity and in the current budget. So, I, you know, it's, to me, it's one of those things, it sounds great on paper, we did it once, that, that just, I, I just, I just can't, I just think we need to, to stay here, um, where we're already set up, and, um, so anyway, we don't need to beat a dead horse, that, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter?
Not, not, not on. Well, one of the things now, I'm, one of these, I like to compromise, I can see both things. I mean, we used to travel as commissioners. Now, again, we weren't on, on computer at the time. Now, if it's, if it's just the television part of it, I'd say, "Well, just don't televise it that day, we just go meet the public." Uh, and that would be one thing, but I don't know if we've already, already gotta pay for it, then that, we'd be paying for something. Now, you mentioned, uh, Rob, you mentioned about using our, our dollars that we use for, you know, our, our, our education part. Well, we gotta have that education part. You're gonna get penalized if you don't do that, that, I don't know if he just told you that, because you're going to, you've got to have that. Uh, but one of the things, I'm with, uh, Lynn on, you know, not, you know, with our budgets being cut the way that we're, with the, the 25% off our supplies, and then 50% off our textbooks, you know, when you say you're gonna spend $2,000, you know, I, I do have a problem with that, but then the other side of me says, "Ah." You know, I like to go out and do the community. So I'm, I'm kinda split on this. I really am. Uh, because when we went out in the community as commissioners, we, we, it worked out good for us, and it didn't cost us that much. So it doesn't really matter, you know, I'm, I could go either way on this thing. I really could. Uh, but I would like to see what our initial costs were. I would like to see the same thing. I could go either way. I want to see it put on the consent, but I would like to see what our breakdown were, uh, on this. And I'm just gonna leave it at that, at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Shoemaker?
What's on the action agenda for next week, so I'm not gonna be too long-winded. Uh, the big thing is, is when you have a meeting, and I've been in numerous meetings, and not just this one, but any time you have a corporate meeting, and you ask people to voluntarily come, for the most part, if they don't have any skin in the meeting, or any reason for being there, they're not gonna show. There's plenty of other opportunities for them to do other things, and that's what they're gonna do. If you noticed at the, at the meeting at Winkler, the people that were there were from Central, who would have been here if we'd have been here. There were very few Winkler parents, if any, in the audience, there were some staff from Winkler there, but for the most part, we didn't see many at, from that community, because there wasn't anything that affected them. If we go to Mount Pleasant, unless we have something that affects them, you may or may not have people come and listen to one of our boring work sessions, because if you don't know what we're talking about, or you don't wanna, or you're interested in what we're talking about, you're not gonna come and just sit through one of these, because they're, they're laborious, and, um, they don't have the data that we have in front of us when we're, we're going through it, nor do they have the time to preview it. So, I could go either way on it, I, I feel like if it's costing the system money, and we could use that money in other areas, even supplies, I would rather, I would rather move it in that, in those ways. And then if we can generate meetings that literally would involve that community, and have something where they can come out and talk to us, and we have something on the agenda that engages them, that's what I feel like we, as a Board, should, should find a way to deal with. Maybe work sessions aren't the right, maybe they're not the right object, maybe there's another style meeting that we want to have occasionally, that, that reaches out into the community, and really involves them, the people at that school, maybe about their, their sit plans, maybe about their PTOs, something like that, that, that they can, they can gather around and rally behind, and, and show that, and see that we're really interested in what they're doing.
I mean, if we really wanted to do something, I mean, we really did, why don't we start just doing ourselves? Us do town hall meetings, our Board just doing it, not at our meeting. If we really wanted to do something, us hold a town hall meeting, other than our, our meetings, if we wanted to do something. If we wanted to do a school, I mean, other than our meeting. If, if, if we had a school we were interested in, other than our regular meeting, us do a town hall meeting in a school, other than our regular meeting, if we wanted to do something. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Well, I, I'd have to defer that over to our attorney, Ms. Stone?
If we wanted to have a special meeting. All right, say we wanted a special meeting, just a special meeting, not to discuss all this other stuff, but say one evening, we wanted to have a special meeting, and we called it a town hall meeting, to meet with those parents, say for an hour, or, or, or to just, but nothing, none of this other stuff, just a special meeting, say, "Tonight at, we're gonna have a town hall meeting for an hour, just our Board, not to have all this other stuff." We could do that, could we not? And that way, the staff wouldn't have to come, I mean, we could just go there for an hour, could we not?
If you vote and properly notice it, yes, you absolutely can.
And that way, staff wouldn't have to come, we wouldn't have to bring these laptops, we wouldn't have to do anything, would we not? And that way, we could do exactly what we, we wouldn't have to have all this stuff, we wouldn't have to have the cameras, and like I say, we could do that at any school we wanted to.
Well, I'm not an attorney, obviously, you know. I think I miss my calling, though, sometimes, when I look at, you know, some things.
And that way, we could do exactly what he wanted to do, and we could pick a school we wanted to?
Well, the thing is, see, we're talking about work sessions, we're not talking about town halls, but now, town hall is an option. But the, the item just before us, though, is the work session on-the-road items. But keep in mind, though, that would fall in the line of what you're saying, Carolyn, since we are an elected body, one member can't do a lot by himself or herself. Two can't, three can't, but you get four of us together, we can do pretty much anything. We can change anything that we feel like we need to change. And so you have to keep that in mind, and any time four of us are together, that constitutes a consensus. And so, we wouldn't be able to do any kind of voting, but since there's four of us there, then, and the other three didn't have privy to what the four discussed, it does create a problem, in my opinion.
But I was saying, let's do it as a Board. I was saying, let's say we're gonna have a special meeting, and let's do it as a Board.
Well, I think that's something we can discuss at some other time, as far as town hall meetings and all, but the issue this before us now, though, is the work sessions on-the-road travel for Board meetings. That's where we're at now. And, uh, you know, it, it might be sort of ironic, but with us talking about the bond referendum, and just so happens, Mount Pleasant Middle School is in the middle of that conversation there. I mean, it, I don't know what kind of direction we're gonna get from the county between now and December the 2nd, but it might be, though, that we could continue to have that Mount Pleasant work session there, and it would be a December item of discussion, that's about the location, that, this and that and all, but that's all speculating, though. So, but my opinion is, though, is that, uh, we need to probably just hold them here, and, uh, and let it lay at that. But either way, though, it's on the action item, it's an action item for next week, and so you can ask questions, discuss between yourselves, between now and then, and, uh, whenever we vote next week, it'll be 4, 3, 3, 4, uh, 5, 2, or 6, 1, whatever it is, but we're gonna take whatever the Board's decision is and move forward with it. Okay? That's how we'll do it. So this'll go to the action agenda for next week. All right, now, another item on our, uh, list of things tonight here, is we've got the North Carolina School Board Annual Conference coming up next month.
Mr. Shoemaker, I have one, one question.
Yes.
So the action item is what, to eliminate all, every, all the, the...
Well, that's what the recommendation is.
Or just all but the one that was, that's coming up, the one after, next year, or just...
No, the recommendation is, is that we revise the Board calendar to remove these, uh, on-the-road work sessions.
Each future.
Yeah. And then, like I say, when we vote next week, you know, it's an action item, so we'll have a little more chance to discuss it if you want to. And if you come with the, come up with a compromise, then we can have an amended motion or whatever. Is that right, Ms. Stone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're good.
By next Monday, we'll have a better vision.
We might, since we're meeting with the Commissioners on Thursday, so it might be that we have a little bit, like Ms. Shoemaker said, we may have a little better vision for what's gonna happen in the future, so. All right, let's move on to what I was saying, that, uh, you know, we've got the, uh, North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference coming up next month. Uh, it's November the 18th, 19th, and 20th, and, uh, I'd like to find out from the Board members, who, who is planning on going, who's gonna be there. I think, uh, Mr. Phillips said he would be able to come on Monday, I think he said Monday, he's already gone. he's already gone, but we need to find out who's going, and then after we do that, the next item, which is 5.8, and we can tie them both in, I'll need a decision from both items, though, consent or action, but first off, who's going? I'm going-
I'm going all the way, I mean, the whole conference.
All right, Barry, Carolyn.
I'm going Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday's what I'm-
Monday, Tuesday?
I'm going to be there the whole time.
All three days? Are you staying or coming home?
I'll be staying.
Okay, and then Blake, you're staying two days? You'll be driving both days, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, all right, and then, Rob?
I haven't worked it out.
You hadn't got it worked out?
I could go Monday.
Okay.
Arrive Sunday and stay through Monday, could.
All right, so looks to me like, Eileen, we've got, looks to me like we've got Barry two days, Carolyn all three days, Blake two days, me Tuesday, Rob hadn't got his worked out yet, and David said he might could come Monday, and I think Jeff told me he could come on Monday as well.
He can come on Tuesday.
He did? All right, well, that will be fine, then, just half-day on Tuesday?
I'll be Monday, half-day.
Okay, that's good. And also, board members, keep in mind, you know, of our board budget, you know, some of you, you know, I mean, like Blake, you hadn't got your credit hours yet, and I don't think, some of yous hadn't got your credit hours yet, and you'll see that for Monday's session, you get eight hours for Monday, that's a full day. And then on Tuesday, you get nine hours, and Wednesday, you get another two hours, so you're looking at 19 hours if you attended the whole conference. But keep in mind, though, you're only required to have 12. And also keep in mind the board budget, because we've only got $13,000 set aside for all of the board members to get their continuing education, and, you know, and in particular, Carolyn, you know, you've got the China trip coming up, and you've got some other things, so keep in mind your budget, okay, when you schedule it.
Yeah, but that one's not included in my budget.
Is that right, Ms. Monroe, that the annual conference is not part of the board budget?
Not the annual conference, but the China's not included.
No, no, but you did have some expenses, though, I think.
Yeah, but that's not included in that, it's not supposed to be included in that.
Well, I will need to talk about that, because I believe I've got a, I believe I've got a request for reimbursement, and I think it was coming out of the board budget based on what I got from you, so we'll talk about that in another conversation, okay? I just want to remind the board to make sure to keep your board budget in mind, okay? And also to look at going to these meetings so you can get your credit hours for the year.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Regarding the budget, and maybe this is not the appropriate time, or we'd have to discuss it for future similar annual conferences, but is it advisable to remove the spouse special guest line item there? I mean, if we're trying to really watch the budget, I-
Well, that would be on each board member, that would be on you, you know, if you took, like if I took Patty with me to the law conference, you know, and there was additional costs incurred for that, then it would be up to me. But they only going to pay for me, just me, the board member, you, the board member.
Oh, I see, that's the cost of the hotel, I got you, I got you.
Yeah, that's the hotel, you know.
That's not what the board is paying.
Yeah, it don't matter if you got two.
Right, as long as, as long as we're not paying for guests to go-
Oh, absolutely, no, we wouldn't be doing that.
Good, 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 thank you. I missed that.
Yeah, we're pretty sharp on that, I think. So I think we got it lined, everybody, so we got a consensus now on who's going, everybody's clear on who's going and what days, and Ms. Monroe's got it.
I wasn't paying attention to, do we need to know who's going, or just you? I wasn't-
Well, it's an action item here, that we'll be going to the consent, that we're approving it, that we're, the board's approving these folks that's going. So that's going to the consent agenda, all right? Now, the next item is the voting delegates. When we go to the North Carolina School Board Association meeting, they have a number of legislative items, a number of other issues that they bring before the school districts in North Carolina, and based on the number of students that you, not students, but the amount of revenues that your school district has, like in, I think it's $5 million, anything over $5 million in annual funds, you get four voting delegates. So since we have 200 and some million, and obviously we have four, we have the availability of four delegates, and so I need to know who that's going to the meeting. And the meeting, the delegate assembly is on Tuesday, and I believe at 11:30 to 1:00, and so I would need to know of you that's going to be there on Tuesday, whose plans on being a voting delegate. I'll volunteer on Tuesday, since I'm going to be there already. So I got myself, I need three other members of this board that will be voting delegates. Ms. Carpenter, she'll do it, because she's going to be there, okay?
I'll be there, but-
Tuesday at 11:30?
I'm okay if somebody new wants to do it, I'm okay either way.
Well, Jeff will be there, so Jeff, he said he would be there till half-day, so that should be long enough for him to be a voting delegate. I didn't ask him if he wanted to be a voting delegate, but he, I guess he'll be there enough. And Barry, you'll be there, you want to be a voting delegate?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, all right, so basically, I've got three for sure, myself, Carolyn, and Barry Schumaker, and I have one of you gentlemen here that would like to be a voting delegate.
Well, I would be there Tuesday.
So you're out.
If I'm there, I don't have a compromise.
See, we got to send it to the School Board Association, so we'll have to put Jeff Phillips down. Okay, so there they are, Eileen, Lynn, Carolyn, Barry, and Jeff Phillips, for our voting delegates.
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, all right, Blake will be the alternate, okay, that's fine. All right, so we got consensus on that for next Monday's meeting. All right, the last item here is nomination for North Carolina School Board Association School Board Member Leadership Award, and Board Vice Chair Blake Kiger's going to address that.
Yeah, I'm going to steal the gavel from you for just one second, and you probably are okay with that at this point, but the NCSBA gives a leadership award, they give several awards, and one of them is a leadership award that's condensed into one year's worth of school, a school year, so for the 2012-13 school year, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Harrison.
Well, there I was, reading my email from the North Carolina School Board Association, and saw a reference to a leadership award, and looked in the mirror, and I said, no, not that one. And I've known Mr. Schu off and on over the years, and I can't think of any other word than leadership that I would associate with Mr. Schu. And I'm proud to be on this board, I am proud to serve with this board. We all have our hearts in the right place, and we're all passionate for the children and the school system, and the staff, and the teachers, and a large part of that is thanks to Mr. Schu's leadership. I could, of course, read the long narrative here that we've all been involved in composing and putting together, and I won't do that, because Mr. Schu would blush on us, and that would be quite in his characteristics. But I will say that, in my own opinion, the portion of the description of Mr. Schu's leadership for us, and the reason for this nomination for the North Carolina School Board Association Board Member Leadership Award is summed up in the last sentence of the narrative, that it is well-deserving for Mr. Schu, and I do ask my colleagues on the board to unanimously approve this nomination.
Well, this is an action item, so you just, you make a motion to-
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. So all those in favor of nominating our chairman, Mr. Lynn Schu, for the North Carolina School Board Association Leadership Award, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Better not be. Congratulations, Lynn. This, I'm going to add just one brief thing, with four new members that started, and within a week of that, or right at the same time the Sandy Hook incident took place, that when we got started, we had a lot of security issues, and a lot of things go on and happened, all at one time. To kind of navigate that and then go through a tough budget year, it's been, it's been a tough year to be the chairman, and you've done a remarkably good job, and so this is well-deserved, and we'll send it up. I think we got the paperwork situated to send up to Raleigh, so thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger, and thank you, board members, sort of beside myself, you know. But I appreciate you bestowing such a great honor on me, you know, I do what I do because I love the children, I love what we're doing here, and if there's any such a thing as a board member loving to work as a school board member, I do. I talked to one of our former coaches today, and he told me, he said, Lynn, I know it's a thankless job. He said, he said, people all the time try to tell me that I ought to be a school board member. He said, I get hollered enough as a coach, he said, I don't want to do it for free. And I said, well, you know, I don't mind that part, because, you know, we all have got to learn to live together, we've got to learn how to interact together and make this a better place, a better place for the kids, and I'm truly honored, and I appreciate all of you guys and Ms. Carpenter for nominating me for this, and I hope that I can continue to be some type of an asset to this board and ongoing ventures that we have, and as you all know, there's a lot to this, and there really is a lot to it, and it was, no doubt, a tough year, but, you know, we endured it, and so I appreciate it more than I could ever say. So with that being said, and if there's nothing else, it's time for us to adjourn the meeting.
If I just may, with Mr. Phillips gone, he did give me a verbal, so it, in effect, was a unanimous decision, even though Mr. Phillips is not here, but his vote also was in line with the majority vote.
Well, I appreciate you telling us that, Mr. Harrison, because I obviously was caught totally, you know, unaware of this, and actually was working on some other issue, as some of you already know about, but I appreciate it more than I can say. And so with that being said, I'd like to call for a motion that the board be adjourned.
So moved.
Have a motion, Mr. Harrison, or have a second? Second, Ms. Carpenter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that being said, the meeting is officially adjourned. I want to say good night to our viewing audience and to all of you that's in attendance tonight, and we'll see you back next Monday night for our business meeting, where we'll conclude some of these issues we talked about tonight. So, good night.